Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of October 6, 2021. This is Chair Bonnie Sontag. I will call the role to start the meeting for the Planning Board. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth DeLeal. Not yet. Bob Calp.
Here.
Liam McGovern will not be here. Heather Rogers.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde will not be here. Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here. Also Linda Guthrie, our note taker, Andy Fort, Director of Planning, Jennifer Blancher, zoning administrator. That's all our folks that I see. Before I go through our agenda, I just want to welcome our newest member, Heather Rogers. The Planning Board will have an introductory session with her at the end of our meeting tonight. But in case anyone's wondering why I called her name, she is our newest member and welcome.
Thank you.
So the agenda is to begin a joint public hearing with the Planning and Development Committee of the City Council and the Committee of the Whole on an amendment to the use table and other related administrative areas of the zoning ordinance. Under other business, we have a lot request for lot releases at the Evergreen Commons. There's a just and there is if you jump down from there, there's a correspondence letter from William Brown regarding accessibility issues at Evergreen. I'd like to take that second because those two are relating to the same project. Third, we'll have a discussion of the revised short term rental amendment among the Planning Board members. It's a public meeting, but not a public hearing, so we won't be taking any testimony, but just discussing it among ourselves. We have approval of the minutes for September 15th and then other updates. And that is our agenda for tonight. I will pass it over to Counselor Shan to open her meeting.
All right, this is Counselor Shan, Chair of the Planning and Development Committee. I'll call the role of the committee. Counselor Wallace, are you here?
Here.
Counselor Igerman, are you here?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
All right. Yes, we can hear you. So that's the quorum for the Planning Development Committee Committee. So I will hand it back over to Chair Sontag.
To do what?
Um, so I'm sorry to hand it over to Andy. And oh, I also will say that Counselor McCauley, who is the sponsor of the ordinance that we're looking at tonight, is also in the audience. So Director Port, do you want to pull up the amendment, I mean, the ordinance?
Will do. And again, I defer to Counselor McCauley if you'd like to provide an introduction on the amendment that has been sponsored.
Sure. Let me just kind of give you the the gist of what it is, right? I know part of this is to to review the technical language here, but what we're trying to accomplish is the tennis club would like to expand and there are things that are prohibiting them to be able to do that. And this is a this is an attempt to try to expand the the use of zoning for potential uses in in this area, right? And it has to do with outdoor recreation as opposed to a country club. But I think that ship has sailed in terms of the land use that we have. But we do have select parcels that potentially could be used for you know, revenue generating going forward. And so I I sponsored this because I think it's got some merit for discussion as much as anything else. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley. So Chair Sontag, do you want to discuss or open it up for questions?
I would like
Planning Board? I would like to go straight to your public comment.
I would like to have some discussion or presentation of the actual content and the changes. And if Counselor McCauley doesn't want to do that, possibly Director Port could do that.
Sure, Counselor McCauley, would you like me to just?
Yeah, I thought you were going to. That's why I didn't be further.
Sure. Sorry, just always giving deference to the sponsor. The the general gist is that the first component, what it's doing here is adjusting the country club use, which really isn't used in the way that the definition of that use is in the ordinance today. So the thought here in this particular amendment, as it was discussed with the proponents, was to modify the term country club and turn that into outdoor health and recreation as a category. And then also to make sure that the health and recreation facility category had clarification that that was indoor. So there was a distinction essentially between two uses, indoor and outdoor, health and recreation uses that the city has or would want to have in the future. There is then an adjustment in the in the R2 district where the, as the Counselor McCauley mentioned, the property that was in question here, where the the question originated, falls within the R2 district. So in this case, it would allow, rather than by not permitted, it would be SP by special permit, that that use could be permitted. That in essence would allow, if you sort of follow this through, both of those uses, indoor and outdoor, to happen on the same property. That's where this footnote here comes into play. It just clarifies that it is possible to have both indoor and outdoor on the same property where they're obviously legally permitted or by special permit. Then you have the definitions of the uses have been adjusted to account for those changes accordingly. It's clarified in here that there's the ability, and this is, I'll defer, I believe Attorney Mead is here this evening, and perhaps some representatives from the tennis club. But the idea was to allow some flexibility for a structure that also had a temporary enclosure such that it could be opened certain portions of the year, again, indoor and outdoor recreation. My understanding is there might have been discussion of a pool with a sort of a retractable roof, so it could be both indoor and outdoor. And that was the reason for this language here, as I understand it. The there are some adjustments to the lot coverage, just recognizing the coverage on the lot, which I can display. Again, this was a zoning amendment. But in particular, how it would apply here, there was a concern that a lot of coverage requirement was too strict. And so that was adjusted in the table here to accommodate the expansion that was desired. Again, a change in the title of the use, but not the dimensional requirements. That's the indoor recreation facility. And then we ensured that there was at least a parking requirement for the uses. And, you know, certainly one could debate what what would be appropriate, but here there is, at least for both of those uses, the existing country club converted to outdoor health and recreation, having an adjusted parking requirement. And the health and recreation facility use number four with 406, adding the word indoor in front of it to clarify that that is indoor facilities. And again, the existing parking requirement. So that is in essence, the amendment here. Everything else in the zoning ordinance would effectively stay the same.
I'd like to take questions for clarification because I have one, but I would take them from anybody else as well. Could you go back up to the first table that shows where it's permitted and not permitted, these uses? So you're suggesting the outdoor health and recreational facility be special by allowed by special permit in the R2? But the indoor health and recreational facility is not permitted in R2? Is that?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question, Chair Sontag. I guess, and anyone else who wants to speak to this, I defer to them. But generally speaking, I think what should be noted here is that the indoor recreation facility at the tennis facility has already been granted by variance. Use variances are no longer allowed under zoning, but that use is is existing. It is essentially grandfathered protected with its existing permit. And and so to your point, I guess, in the R2 district, there's not a need, at least for this particular interest in this facility, to have a permitted or a special permit, SP indication in that table there, because that use is already there. Had that been, you know, a concern, perhaps that NP would be adjusted to a PRSP. But in this case, the at least the outdoor health and recreation facility component, which is not there today and has not been authorized, would have to be allowed here in the table by special permit. And that's why the NP in in R2 goes to SP.
Well, then that raises another issue because one of you mentioned that it would potentially be covered and used as a coverage facility. Wouldn't that, I mean, I'm trying to avoid any problems because the Planning Board will be the permit granting authority down the road. So if it were to be enclosed at any time of the year and continue to be used, wouldn't that fall under an indoor facility?
Yeah, again, the assumption here was that both uses, the existing indoor and the proposed outdoor being proposed now and permitted by special permit could be permitted there. Again, I'd have to give deference to the the property owners about what their plans are. I haven't seen a specific plan for what the facility would be or how, you know, specific dates that it would be open or closed per se. But the idea was that the with both the indoor and outdoor permitted on the premises, obviously with a plan that goes with that, yes, there would be a portion of it that would be retracted essentially, as I understand it.
Are there any other questions for clarification at this point? We'll have more time for discussion afterward.
Counselor Igerman has his hand up.
Well, Attorney Mead, who represents the property owner, why doesn't she go first? Because she may be able to answer the question before I ask it.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Counselor Igerman, members of the Planning Board, Chair of the Planning Board and members of the other members of the Subcommittee. Lisa Mead, me, Talan Costa, on behalf of the Newburyport Tennis Club. Andy, actually, if you could just go back to the the zoning for a minute, because I would like to answer the Chair's question related to the covering and indoor use. So Madam Chair, if you now look at the definition of outdoor healthcare recreation facility, it includes temporary enclosures for portions of the year. So the definition has been changed that such facilities may be enclosed for portions of the year by a temporary enclosure system. So the temporary enclosure system wouldn't run afoul of the definition of outdoor health and recreational facility. And so hopefully that answers your question. And as as the as the Director said, the current facility is thereby to actually to special permit use, excuse me, to use variances over a period of time. And I'll just go through my presentation. And then perhaps if there are questions, we're happy to answer them. Certainly, I think that there are probably some other ideas floating around. So the Newburyport Tennis Club came to me to talk about how they could better diversify and solidify their uses within the community and expand the uses, understanding that the existing use was allowed through a use variance. So we met with Andy and we met with Counselor McCauley and Counselor Wallace, and we talked about what the goals of the tennis club were. And so the probably cleanest way they thought or we thought to do this would be to modify the zoning to allow the use by special permit in the R2 district, but keep a, you know, significant size lot area, which really there aren't very many of. And I think Andy has some GIS plans to show that in the R2 district. But if you set the limitation on 130,000 square feet minimum lot size, which is 2.9 acres, the tennis club lot, just for informational purposes, is 5.5 acres. You modify the lot coverage to be 30% instead of 10% because it doesn't make sense, obviously, given the definition of lot coverage. If you're going to have a pool or temporary enclosure, maybe you're going to have a a small building that goes with that or other items that you really do need to increase the lot coverage. And then, of course, include parking requirements that are based upon gross floor area rather than employees and company vehicles. Based upon research that I've done on similar facilities, that's really what the parking is based upon. See if you can go to the next slide, please. So as I said before, the owners of the tennis club want to be able to diversify recreational opportunities that they offer, and they want to include outdoor activities. I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that any way that we can improve outdoor recreational facilities, particularly in light of our recent experience, that we need to do it. And the club would like to do that so they solidify their base. They've also heard from a number of members of the community that more outdoor recreational facilities would be would be attractive to to the community. And of course, the current zoning does not allow this. So let me go to the next slide. So here, unlike most proposals that you get to change zoning, you know, all the owners of the health club are health professionals, right? They're not developers, they're health professionals. And they got into this business to be better stewards of the community. You know, when they purchased this property, I think Jonathan Woodman and and Byron Matthews really saw themselves as stewards of the community. And when they met Laura and Gary and Daryl and Kristen, they saw in those four similar similar ideas and goals. And so really what they want to do is to be able to provide other opportunities. And so until they know that they're going to be able to do that, they haven't actually undertaken a specific planning process that they could actually show you what their plans are. In fact, they intend to do a market survey of the community to better understand what the community wants. The driver of the proposal is to provide a swimming pool, which we'd be enclosed at various times. They would also like to provide some outdoor tennis, pickleball. Those are all on the table, but there are many other opportunities. But again, the the goal is to provide a facility which meets community needs and advances an opportunity for outdoor recreational activities. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to review this part. What I'd like to do is turn it over now to Laura Goldberg, who is one of the owners, and she would like to have a few comments relative to what the owners are doing and seeing and what they've done to this date.
Hi. Yes. Hi, this is Laura Goldberg. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I want to thank the Planning Board and City Councilors for listening to our proposal. Myself with Gary Gassman, Kristen Tolman, Daryl Colden, the four of us as owners purchased the club several years ago, and it's been a wonderful undertaking. Newburyport Tennis Club is a great community asset, and we have a 50-year history. We have over 700 members now. We've grown the membership, almost doubled it since we bought it. And we run a variety of programs. This is all indoors, ranging from junior programs, after school programs. We have team tennis. We now have more beginner clinics and adult tennis. And prior to the pandemic, it was also a social hub where people could hang out afterwards. We developed a great partnership in the last two years with Newburyport Youth Services, which is a great program. And now we run their tennis programs in the summer. We use Atkinson Commons as well, which is outdoor space. And then our indoor space for that. And we also do some school vacation programs. During the pandemic, when everyone became very involved outside, we realized the need for more outside activities because everything to date has been inside the building. And people have come up and asked us, like, what are you going to do with all this space? And we've thought about a variety of options. And then based on the interest in the desire for swimming and pools, having raised our kids ourself and not had access to that, we decided that that might be a really good use of the land. And so there's lots of people that are interested. They're not here today because we figured down the line, maybe other people could come in and say their desire to have a pool. Along with the pool, maybe some games like bocce ball and pickleball and these other sorts of things that go with a pool. You know, a clubhouse, little buildings that the kinds of things that go along with a pool would be great. That would diversify our tennis club and give us these other opportunities. And it's a really good use of the land because nothing exists like this in Newburyport right now. I also, lastly, wanted to mention that we have started to have discussions with John Freehan, the Executive Director of the Y, about how to collaborate with the Y so that we would have more of an outdoor recreational pool for families for fun and swimming, whereas the Y does a lot of indoor swimming lessons over the years. And we want to really strengthen our collective resources. And that's basically what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. So with that, that so the goal obviously is to change the zoning to allow some diversified use of this parcel and provide more outdoor recreational opportunities to the community. Still with a special permit process, also with the site plan review process, this would trigger site plan review just for the board and the council's information. The two variances that were granted on this, the first variance didn't require site plan review. The second modified variance was subject to administrative site plan review. And that was, of course, before all of the performance standards were put in place. So those, any proposed project would be subject to both special permit and site plan review. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions that the the board of the council might have. And we appreciate your consideration and being willing to work with the club.
I'll go back to Counselor Igerman since your hand was up first.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, this is this is Counselor McCauley's ward, and he's sponsoring this rather than the applicant directly. So I defer to him that, you know, that this is something that is good for his ward. Also, I mean, just anecdotally, I'm not aware of any problems to date with the racket club historically at this location. And I I fully understand the argument for trying to enable both their expansion and ability to expand outdoors, not just indoors. Sean, I'm on board with all that. I I get it. Just a couple of things, though, is, you know, I I haven't been able to find the variances at the Registry of Deeds. I'm sure I'm sure they have. It would be helpful just to know what they say. Yeah, because I don't I don't know what was originally approved back in, you know, 1970 or 78 or whatever it was. And then my concern is just unintended consequences. There is a an acreage minimum that you heard, you know, 2.9 acres, I think it was, 130,000 square feet. So there are a limited number of places that this could ever happen in the R2 district. But most of the R2 districts and all and most of my, not most of it, but much of my ward is R2, is pretty densely packed housing. And so I just want to, you know, question whether that this is the right zone for allowing this. It could be that you know, it'd be R3, which is orange. Now, there's other unintended consequences of if we were to rezone this property R3. And I was I was talking to Counselor McCauley about it, you know, it is, it's not a spot zoning in the sense that we're conveying some benefit to land that's indistinguishable from its neighbors, because it is distinguishable from its neighbors. It's a big piece of land. And it's been in nonresidential use for a long time. Also, the what is it, the Country Manor next door at the at the corner? That's also different than its neighbors. And and I, you know, you might, I I mentioned to Counselor McCauley, you might want to rezone that. The downside is, of course, there are other uses besides outdoor recreation and indoor recreation that the R3 would allow that are not allowed in R2. So I I understand. I'm just trying to problem solve. I I I haven't heard yet anyone begrudge the tennis club from wanting to do what it wants to do. We're just trying to figure out how to intelligently. I also appreciate there will be site plan review. There will be a special permit. It's not by right, which is better than the old variances, as Attorney Mead said. So there's more control. But I just want to be more thoughtful about, you know, is this really the right zone to do this in? Because I don't I don't want to encourage someone to assemble 130,000 square feet in another part of R2 to do something like this. It fits here. But I don't know that it fits in most of R2, to be honest. That's it. Those are my two cents.
I see Rick Tainer's got his hand up.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. Actually, one of my questions kind of follows on Counselor Igerman's comment about zoning. And I was actually thinking about whether it might be appropriate to go the other way and to rezone this parcel to R1, which is the zoning across the street. Because there are probably more parcels that would be appropriate for that. And and few, this would, that would cause fewer unintended consequences in terms of bringing in other uses that you didn't want to have. But that that's only if we were going to consider rezoning rather than just changing the zoning for the R2 district. And I did have a question, which also related to Counselor Igerman's comments. If we know how many parcels in the R2 district right now are over 130,000 square feet, and that would be something good to know before we make this change. The two questions that I have that are specific to this zoning proposal. One is a question about parking. And the question is, is the park, are the parking requirements added? In other words, if the if there was an outdoor recreational facility were added to this site, would the parking requirement for the site be the the requirement for parking for the outdoor facility? The one per 500 square feet of gross floor area? And plus, the one per 100 square feet of gross floor area for the existing facility? In other words, we would need to bring, make sure that the entire site complied with zoning. And further, do we know that the term gross floor area as defined in the zoning ordinance would apply to an outdoor tennis court, for example? Because that's one of the uses that are there. So I think we need to be clear about what the the parking requirement is. I I'm not sure that a tennis court has gross floor area under a zoning ordinance, so whether that only applies to buildings. So the whole question of parking is a question that I have. And then the other question that I think is really of more concern to me is the fact that when you look at the proposed dimensional requirements, the lot coverage is proposed at 30%, which is a little bit higher than the existing R2 district requirement of 25%. We just want to be aware that we would be allowing more coverage for this than for anything else in the R2 district. But more importantly, the R2 district requires 40% open space, and this says no open space requirement. And I I am concerned about that when we're adding stuff in the middle of a potentially in the middle of a fairly dense area or adjacent, I should say, adjacent to a dense residential area. It's not in the middle of it because the land across the street is open. But I I am concerned about saying that a facility that might be, might include a covered tennis court or something like that would have no open space requirement. So those are my my two major concerns of the parking questions, which I think are they're they're ambiguous at this point at best, and the fact that there's no open space requirement for a property in the R2 district.
Can I? But Madam Chairs, might I address a couple of those comments?
Certainly.
Thank you. So as to the parking requirements, Mr. Tainer, if you took the floor area, which is on the assessor's card right now, and they call it gross floor area for the first floor, the tennis club is 41,000 square feet. You know, I think you can do it cumulative. That required, that would require 82 parking spaces, which is really kind of crazy. We originally had proposed this at 1,000 square feet per parking space. But I still think you can do it cumulatively, but I I think that that's quite frankly, overkill on the parking. So the idea was that it would be in addition to whatever was the what already existed, one per 100. So for the outdoor, it would be one per 500, and for the indoor, it would be one per 100, but they already have their permits. So I think they would be locked in with that. So I think you raise a good point, but it's why we listed it at one per 1,000 originally. The next is the open space requirement. You know, the country club currently has You know, the country club currently has no open space requirement. One presumes that that's because when they thought about a country club, it would be like a golf course, maybe. And so therefore, there wasn't an open space requirement. I think that, you know, a reasonable open space requirement could be added there. I don't know that that's an issue. The issue is not, you know, they're certainly not going to cover the entire property, and that would that would be antithetical to what they're trying to produce at the club. The next goes to a slide Andy had up there a little bit ago, and it kind of is a segue to Council Igerman's comment about the R one, R two, R three. I guess he commented about the R three. Andy, could you put up the slide related to how many parcels of land in the R two have one hundred thirty thousand square feet? So Andy has a slide that shows how many parcels of land in the R two have one hundred and thirty thousand square feet. And they are. Can we put that up? There we go. So there are thirteen. And you can probably recognize most of these. If you start at the top along closest to the river, that's the Parker Ridge condominiums. So of the of the thirteen, eight of them are owned by the city of Newburyport and and or are public housing and or healthcare. So you have the Evita facility. And you have the the high school, excuse me, the high school, the middle school, you have the Bresnahan School. Then you have the public housing up behind the tennis club, which is right in the middle there. And you have the condos, as I noted on over on Parker Parker River, Parker Ridge, excuse me, you have the Woodman Way condos. And then you have the let me just see, one other one, the Zabriski Drive condominiums. And then there's one that's Low Street, the Low Street Apartments up by Story Avenue. So those are the parcels right now in the R two that have one hundred thirty thousand square feet or more. So it's it's pretty limited. And mostly are under control of the City of Newburyport or the or the Public Housing Authority. Obviously, it's not to say, as Council Igerman suggested, that somebody couldn't amass, if you will, one hundred thirty thousand square feet and want to put in an outdoor recreational facility. I think I think that that would be a very, very low risk thing to have happen, but certainly anything can happen. And just so you know, I'm at the kind of the piece up at forty-three eighteen, map forty-three lot eighteen is behind the shopping centers. That's at the edge of the R two district, and that is behind Demos and Shaw's. So I don't I don't think it's a big risk in the R two. Certainly, if you want to zone this R three and have it allowed by special permit in the R three with modified definitions and modified dimensional tables. You know, we don't have an objection to that. I don't know that the city would want personally, I don't know that the city would want the R one designated on it. I think that opens up the R one district to or maybe it's okay to have another healthcare, outdoor healthcare facility in the R one. I'm not really sure, but that's so that's that's kind of an explanation of the other parcels in the R two. And certainly willing to talk about the dimensional requirements related to open space and parking.
Council Igerman, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I mean, just to continue the discussion. So I I still haven't heard anyone object in principle to what the proposal is, which is to enable the tennis club to do what they want to do. I I think it wasn't my proposal, but the R one, strangely enough, already allows outdoor recreation by special permit. So I think that's what Rick Tanner was was getting at. But, you know, that does theoretically lower the value of the property. You know, just as changing it to R three would raise it, you know. So so maybe, maybe, maybe the better course is to focus on a way to change the dimensional requirements and the parking requirements to address Board Member Tanner's concerns, but keep it in the R two as proposed. I I can see the argument there. I'm not wedded to changing into R three. You know, for example, I in the slide presentation from the property owner, they actually have more than one hundred thirty thousand square feet. So maybe, maybe the way forward here, yeah, I I realize it's only thirteen now, but that's actually more than I expected in the R, you know, the R two. And yeah, it's it it could happen. You just don't know. I mean, I, who knows? You know, we want to anticipate everything. So if they have five point five acres, you know, maybe the way to address this is raise the square footage even higher. And then they get what they want, and we don't have to worry as much that it could arise later. I don't have a, I don't have a feeling on the lot coverage. I think that's really a something we need staff to tell us about. And there'll be some technicalities too, because it's a little weird. I I I gather it doesn't meet our definition of usable, oh, I'm sorry, of open space, which is probably written as accessory to residential uses, but if it's a tennis court, I mean, it is functionally open. So there has to be a way we can solve that one. And then on the parking, that's a good catch. We just have to think about it. I know in Boston, they don't have any requirement for outdoor areas either. You know, they have, then their, their zoning is pretty antiquated, it's from the nineteen sixties, but they just, they only require parking for the indoor component of a golf course. I don't know how wise that is, but I'm just saying, so I don't have a, I don't have another example. That's helpful. I guess I'd like to hear also from the sponsor. I mean, again, it says ward. He knows his ward better than the other counselors, so I'd like to hear from him.
Council McCauley?
I don't have any preference as to, you know, whether we go R two or R three. I I do, I I would be in favor of expanding the lot coverage, because I'm assuming that that ten percent would then be of the, of the, of the, you know, of the redefined lot coverage, which would get them where they want to go. And I think that the requirement for the indoor component of it may you know, may be the the path forward to be able to 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 at least codify the parking requirements upfront. I mean, if if you don't, if you don't have parking, you don't, you don't have, you don't have availability of of using the facility. So and and we don't, we don't have on-street parking there. So you know, that is a delicate balance.
I see Rick Tanner's hand is back up.
Thank you. Again, going off what Council Igerman said a few few minutes ago, I actually hadn't caught on to the fact that the use we're proposing to in this ordinance to allow outdoor health and recreation facilities by special permit in the R one district as well as the R two district. Right? The existing ordinance, as as Council McCauley pointed out, is for a country club. And and as he said, you know, that ship has sailed. But if we're changing the use to an outdoor health and recreation facility, again, I don't know that it's a bad thing, but and this would be mostly sort of West End type of areas. Do we want to be opening that up, or do you want to look if as as you're changing the use and the definition of the use? Do you want to revisit the the use allowance in R one? And maybe not make it available on every one hundred thirty thousand square foot lot in the West End? Yeah, that seems like almost a bigger unintended consequence than anything else we've been talking about. And I don't feel strongly about it one way or another, but I don't think we've talked about how this is going to affect other areas of the city. It's also going to change it, allow it in the industrial zones and and so forth. So I think we probably, I know that I know that this is being done for the benefit benefit of a particular parcel and a particular set of owners, but we probably should think about how changing country club to outdoor health and recreation facility might impact our industrial district and the R one districts.
Madam Chair. Yes, go ahead.
So I, so we got just, I I don't think the proponents, and of course, we are in the situation we're in, so I can't directly talk to them, but I don't think the proponents would be against increasing the minimum size in the R two to Council Igerman's point. To counsel, to Mr. Tanner's point, we actually got the one hundred thirty thousand square feet. That that's the square footage for the R one right now. So you can do a country club. I don't know how you could have ever done it, but you could do a country club in the R one on one hundred and thirty thousand square feet of lot area. So that's where that number came from, just for, just so you know where the genesis of that came from.
Council Igerman, your hand is up, and then Don Walters also has his up. Do you, Council Igerman, do you still have a question?
I I didn't mean to have my hand up, but well, since I do, no, I think I think we're triangulating to something, a solution, which is, yeah, we could raise, maybe R two is actually the optimal location. I I also didn't I I didn't catch that they're allowed in the industrial district. That surprises me, too. I mean, because of land values right now, it may be unlikely that, you know, in our, even in our lifetime, that that country clubs are going to sprout up in the business park and out in in R one and R two. I got that. But I think I think Rick has a good point, which is, you know, while we're accommodating where we want an outdoor health and recreation facility, namely this racket club on Low Street, we might fix some of these earlier assumptions from back in the day, which are questionable. That's all.
Don Walters?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on two, three items. One, it has been addressed, and my comment wasn't necessarily for R one or two or three. But along the theme that Rick and Council Igerman have said, I just, I would want to know, what are the far-reaching impacts for whether it's industrial zone or anything, if we're changing the use from a country club to outdoor so-called outdoor health and recreational facility? My second point is, with respect to, perhaps this is a bit technical, but I was a bit uncomfortable with the definition of temporary closure. It's not capitalized, and I don't understand what that means. Does that mean if you had a facility that's permanent and the roof opens, twenty-five percent of the roof closes, is that temporary? Does that mean so many days in a year? Does that mean that the facility would completely be dismantled? And in so many months, you you would not notice any difference? And then my third point, again, which has been touched on somewhat with with respect to the parking. My my primary issue with parking is if we do have a swimming pool, I think the intensity of people in a swimming pool, there's many more people per square meter, et cetera, in a swimming pool. So I think we should carve out, if there is a swimming pool, there should be a separate requirement or additive requirement for swimming pool, because the density of cars going in to be in a swimming pool would be much greater, in my opinion, than the same square footage the pool compared to an indoor tennis court. That's it. Thanks.
Attorney Mead, your hand is up again?
Oh, no, I apologize. It's still up. There we go.
Okay. Are there further questions from the board right now or other counselors? Chair Sonntag?
Yes, I would reinforce what Don said about the parking. I've been thinking about that, and I realize that that's a question that needs to be addressed around the density of use for a swimming pool versus density of use for other activities either currently or proposed here. And I'd like to see that revisited.
All right. I I will say I agree with Council Igerman. I think this is a a good opportunity to do some, something good for the city. I think some outdoor space for the tennis club sounds like a good idea, and the parking does need to be revisited. With that being said, Andy, one of the things that Council Igerman asked for at the beginning was, do you have the variances that were originally available for the club when it was, you know, originally permitted?
Yes, we do. We can provide, if the council is interested, we can provide that, or planning board members, we can send that out to you.
I think that would be helpful.
The, because Council Igerman and other counselors may know, the decisions back in the day from the Board of Appeals were not particularly lengthy, so I don't think there was a whole lot of specificity in there, as I recall, but but it's a, it's a valid question to look into the details of that as well. So we can certainly provide that to you.
Okay. I see Council Wallace's hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just, I I would imagine there's going to be some interest from the public in in learning about this. Is this something, you know, we could put on the Planning Department's website in terms of just any information or, you know, Q and A type of thing? I don't know how this typically works with when it's just zoning and not a specific proposal. But just something to consider for the public's knowledge. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Wallace. We could post to the zoning amendment page here, and if it's carried over to any other night, post the variance decisions, and if there's other information you're looking for, we can post that there as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Council Igerman?
Yeah, I just make a suggestion. I I think we should put this over, give time to the to Attorney Mead and Andy Port, maybe to tweak their proposal and respond to the comments they got. We know, we know for starters that they should look at increasing the minimum lot size. I really, you know, I I do think they should, at least Andy Port should advise this group, this joint group, on whether we really want to allow outdoor health and recreation facilities in R one or the industrial park or both or neither. And then on the parking, you know, just while we were on the line, although Boston doesn't have anything for this situation, Cambridge does, where they they have a parking requirement where they base it on the maximum occupancy load. And they say it's one space per six people. So that would account for, you know, how many people can fit in the pool, how many people can play tennis, how many people can be in the building. So we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We just need to do some research. If Cambridge doesn't have it right, maybe Watertown does. I don't. But there has to be an answer, and there is, it was a good point by by Council McCauley. There really isn't any off-street parking, I'm sorry, on-street parking at this location. It doesn't work. So we need to get it right. You know, we want them to succeed. We want them to have enough parking. So I don't, I leave it to the chairs when they want to put this over to, but that's my suggestion.
If I could, this is Andy. I I just wanted to note, you do have a zoning hearing on the twentieth. I don't know that that would be a sufficient time to circle back since since you all are getting together in a couple of weeks relative to the, and I'm happy to work on it between now and then or some other date, relative to the zoning districts. I guess I would say that I I feel comfortable enough with the R two designation here, and sticking with that, I agree that probably best to reduce or remove the SP or special permit in the R one and in the business park districts. But otherwise, leave that that row the same. Again, I'm happy to take input from the zoning administrator or others if they want to offer anything.
I do see Council McCauley's got his hand up.
Thank you, Chair. I I have a general question, and and I'm looking for direction on this. So if we took, you know, right now, the proposal is one hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet with thirty percent coverage, which allows for, you know, thirty-nine thousand square feet of of coverage. If if we would, would folks be comfortable? If, if we would, would folks be comfortable, uh, and this is the question, raising it to. Two hundred thousand square feet, which would eliminate, you know, others and reducing that coverage to twenty, it still gets them to the. Forty thousand square feet metric and then probably has uh, room for. Some definition of open space. Um, and you know, tighten up the parking. I, I, I'm just. My question is more directional in nature as much as anything else.
It's a good question, Council McCauley. Um, I do see Alden Clark has his hand up.
Yeah, hi. I just had a question to clarify is if a swimming pool were to go in, is that cover? Is that area part of the lot coverage percentage?
Uh, that's a good question, actually. The lot coverage actually refers to building coverage in our zoning ordinance. Uh, not to impervious surfaces, which is sometimes typically how that's uh, interpreted in communities.
Jennifer Blanchay has her hand up.
Andy touched on uh, the point I was going to make, and that is that our definition of lot coverage does exempt tennis courts. And open swimming pools. Uh, we didn't really contemplate at the time that the existing ordinance is crafted. The fact that a swimming pool might be partially or entirely covered. So we would want to clarify that moving forward. And the definition of what is included in open space. It does include parking areas, driveway areas. Uh, excuse me, it does exclude parking areas and building areas as currently written. Uh, additionally, I would agree with the comment, you know, while I'm speaking, that we do need to further define the definition of temporary enclosure. As we look at this uh, some more.
Good point. Thank you, Jennifer. Oh, I see Rick's hand is back up. And then attorney needs hands back up as well. So Rick, you're first.
Thank you. Every time somebody says something, it makes me learn something new. Um, so the footnote to the use table. Says that um. You can have an indoor health and recreational facility and an outdoor health and recreational facility on one parcel of land. Uh, and so what I'm wondering is, this gets, this is part of the discussion we've just been having. Does, when you go to the dimensional requirements, do you get an outdoor health and recreational facility with thirty percent lot coverage? And an indoor one with thirty percent coverage? Or do you, because they're two separate uses, or do they have to? Does the whole lot uh, fall under that thirty percent wide coverage? I, I don't understand how that works.
Counselor made.
Um, so it would be for the whole, Rick, so that it, it's not cumulative. Is my um, understanding of how it would be interpreted. Um, certainly we can clarify that, but the intention was not to have it be. Thirty plus thirty, right, for sixty percent, but it, that it would be cumulative or the most onerous. Um, the most onerous requirement would apply to the, to the lot. Um, I, I do want to um. Comment on, just on the parking, uh, to give you a couple of examples, um, particularly based upon counselor Igerman's comment. Uh, the Ipswich Country Club, which has seventy two parking spots uh, for both outdoor pool and six tennis club. Six tennis courts. Currently, there's approximately forty five spots at the tennis club here. And they have, um, oh, actually, there's eighty two spaces, sorry, eighty two spaces. At the tennis club here and there are six um, courts and those, uh, and if you drive by, you all know that there, those spaces are never. Fully used. So I think a refinement of the parking is certainly a really, a really valid point and we can work with. Andy on that. So we're happy to do that and it would be great if we could come back on the twentieth and um, I'm happy to make myself available to Andy to try to. Um, nail down some of these issues that have been raised.
Oh, I see Chair Song Talk has her hand up.
Yes, I'd like to speak to the scheduling. I don't know if or what applications we have on for the twentieth. But I know we have a rather complex amendment for a joint public hearing. Scheduled for that night and I'm wondering if all the parties would be amenable um, to discussing this on November third.
That's a good point. We do have short term rental units. And then Andy, don't we have another one as well? I believe the ordinance for the.
We do.
Yeah. I think I would recommend going to the November date if that's amenable to others.
Yeah, and that way the planning, I hope the planning office can um, juggle the. The other work that the planning board has to do on those two nights so that um, you know, it's, it's manageable. So. I would, I appreciate it if, if uh, everybody would be willing to discuss this on November third.
We're, we're fine with that, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Um, I, so I see Counselor Wallace has her hand up.
November third is actually my anniversary. So I, I, I'm not sure I'd be able to make it that night, just, but you don't need all three of us, just, just so you know.
Happy anniversary.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, she hasn't made it yet.
Yeah. Feels probably going to a meeting on our anniversary.
Well, I'd, I'd make a motion to put this over to November third.
Second.
All right. Take a vote, official, well, official vote, Counselor Igerman?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan, yes. So Planning and Development Committee votes to move it to the third. Um, I do see Rick Tainter has his hand up.
Was this a public hearing and should we hear from the public?
We do need to do that as well. I was going to do that. As people in the public are starting to drop, so uh, Chair Sontag, do you have any other questions? Are we good to go to public comment?
No, I don't. I'll wait to hold our um, vote on a continuance until after public comment.
Okay. All right. So as most folks have learned in the last year and a half, we need to, you raise your virtual hand. For public comment. All right, if we don't see any, we can bring it back in.
Okay, for the planning board, I'd like a recommendation to continue this hearing to November third, please.
I'll make a motion, Bonnie, this is Don to continue this hearing to November third.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second, Alden.
Thank you, and I'll call roll. Um, Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, continue, planning board as well.
It takes some getting used to having another Heather on the board. All right, uh, from the Planning and Development Committee, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
All right, roll call. Counselor Igerman?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan, yes. All right. Enjoy the rest of your meeting, folks.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Heather.
Okay, um, before we continue, just for the record, Beth Delisle joined us somewhere just after seven o'clock. Make it seven oh five. It was pretty soon afterward. I saw her come on. Okay, we will move on to requests for lot releases on Evergreen Commons for lots twenty two. Oh, is that the right number? Twenty five?
Two.
Twenty two and twenty five. Oh, it's been changed there. It wasn't on my agenda. Sorry. Um, yes, um, I believe we can go right to attorney need on this one.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, Lisa Mead, me, Telman Costa, thirty Green Street on behalf of Evergreen Commons. Uh, and as the chair announced, um, we are seeking lot releases to the last two lots not having been released. Um, the ta, the city is still holding occupancy permits uh, for three lots. Um, one of which is twenty five and then there is uh, three Gabary, which is lot nine. And one Gabary, which is lot eight. Um, so the, the remaining work to be done on the public infrastructure, if you will. That is the road and drainage and sidewalks is uh, the top coat um, on the end of Gabary. Um, and the top coat on the end of Duffy up as it gets towards Brown and some extension of sidewalk. Um, so this plan was present, was prepared by Steve Sawyer, who is the engineer of record. And then it was reviewed by um, Phil Christianson, who also went out to the site, which is the planning board's peer review engineer. And he concurred with um, Steve and then um, I think Andy and Caitlin will report to you that Jamie Tucolo. Similarly, um, took a look at all of this and he also concurred with um, Steve and Phil about the remaining amount. Uh, that should be, that is needed to finish this part of the public infrastructure. And so um, what we're requesting is that you um, release lots twenty two and twenty five. And um, then in place of that, uh, we will put in place a tripartite agreement. Uh, for the amount of thirty six thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, as this board probably is aware. Under chapter forty one eighty one U, the applicant has a choice but to provide one of three or four different kinds of security. To assure the completion of the public infrastructure, um, either a covenant, which we're asking to be released, a tripartite agreement. Or a surety bond or cash. Um, and so what we're going to do is turn this over from a covenant to. Um, the tripartite agreement. And so we're asking the board to do that. And just uh, for clarification, just so you know why we're looking for a lot. Twenty two and twenty five. Um, lot twenty two um, has already closed, uh, but was not released. The um, closing attorney for that apparently missed the fact that the release wasn't of record and so that already closed. So. We do need to um, we need to have that released, but twenty five is the, is then also the last lot with the. The release needing to, the covenant needing to be released. So we request the board's consideration of that, please.
Um, may I ask for an, just a brief explanation of how the tripartite agreement works as a security?
Sure.
This um, release.
Sure. So um, on the tripartite agreement, if Andy were to go to the um, last page. Um, the bank on this agreement is the law five, uh, the law five cent savings bank. And they will be a signatory to this document and they will have to maintain a, a bank account of thirty six thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, and the planning board, it has to sign off on that before it can be released. So it's an agreement between the developer, the low five cent savings bank and the planning board, hence tripartite agreement. It's one of the accepted securities under forty one eighty one U.
Okay, any questions, comments from board members?
Yes, Bonnie, uh, I may have missed it, but is the explanation that attorney me just. Said, is that explicitly stated in that tripartite agreement?
Uh, this is.
Go ahead, Andy.
Oh, sorry, Don. I didn't want to interrupt your question.
No, that's fine. That's okay.
Uh, yeah, I, I did take a look at this. Uh, there are provisions outlined uh, on the, the prior page. Uh, this is page two. Uh, but some provisions that uh, call for the completion of the work within six months uh, of the date here. Uh, and then also go on to uh, allow a, a period to cure or address the issue upon notice from the planning board in the city. Um, and then after that uh, point, the uh, this, the planning board can essentially pull those funds from the bank. Uh, if the developer is still in default, that's in essence what the provisions explicitly say.
So that's, I guess that's where I was a bit confused. I do not see that in the text that it says specifically that the planning board. Uh, if this is not performed in a certain amount of time or not to the satisfaction, has the complete unilateral right to withdraw those funds. Similar to an error, it's similar to, you know, uh, an on demand letter, letter of credit.
Uh, if I could, Matt, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Madam Chair, um, Mr. Walters, if you look at paragraph D. That's on this page that Andy has here. Uh, if there's a default, then the board shall notify the applicant and the surety accordingly. And the surety shall be paid, shall be paid by the surety to the city. Um, this is a standard tripartite agreement acceptable under forty one eighty one U. Um, and uh, I, I mean, I don't. It, it is what it is and it allows the city to get the money. Just to, just to let you know, this work is actually going to be done by the end of October. Um, so the six months is on here, um, but it's actually going to be done in the next three weeks.
Um, the second question I, I have um, is with respect to the amount. It was a bit unclear to me when uh, the engineer Phil Christians wrote the, the letter talking about thirty seven thousand dollars. Or thereabouts with respect to the top coating, but then there's also a comment about the concrete sidewalks not being completed. So it wasn't clear to me. Did that amount cover both the sidewalks and the top coating?
From my. It, it does, actually. The uh, the breakdown, I can pull that up on the screen for you, but the breakdown that was provided shows the concrete. Between this concrete paving and uh, concrete pavement sidewalk is separate um, uh, items in there, but I guess there's only a. Uh, dollar amount shown for the uh, the paving.
That's why I was a bit confused, but that's okay. If you all are convinced it covers both, then uh, that was, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Are we ready to take a vote on this?
I just, can I just point out a couple of sort of nitpicky things in the um, agreement?
Sure.
Craft. Um, so in the third whereas clause. Uh, after, in the second line covenant by obtaining from the surety to retain funds. I think we need to have an agreement there.
Uh, would you, uh, that, uh, an agreement to retain funds? Is that what you're saying?
I, I think, I think it, by, there seems to be a missing noun. After surety.
Yep, yep, I got you.
An agreement to retain funds.
Okay.
And then I think in paragraph E. The last line should be the remaining security.
Yes.
And then I guess just a question for the board, whether we're comfortable with um. This provision about the failure to act on such request in a timely manner. In paragraph B. Or if there should be a specified timeframe. So if we don't act in a timely manner in either approving, in approving the work.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that we specify like, as Beth said, specify a timeframe in that, but um, I wouldn't be worried if it was, you know, given a few weeks' time.
Are you talking about the second paragraph in paragraph B?
Um, yeah, the second sentence.
Um, so there's a, so I don't, I think it's actually defined, right? So you've got, there's a process that's laid out here. So first of all, I don't, I don't care if you define it, but I think it is defined. So you have to complete the work. If it's not completed. Then they, the applicant has sixty days, right? The work remains un, to be completed. The applicants have an additional sixty days to complete such work. And advise the board accordingly. So. I'm happy to find timely manner. I'm not particularly worried about it in this particular instance. So if you want to put sixty days there or, you know.
I think it would be helpful to have, you know, a specified sixty day timeframe in case something happens and we don't have meetings or.
Right. So we say in a, in sixty days, instead of a timely manner, request on such request in sixty days, within sixty days.
Uh, certainly it's subtle to me.
I think that would give us enough time. I just wouldn't want someone to say, oh, we didn't do it in, you know, two weeks.
Right. So I'm, that's fine.
Not that you would, but just, you know.
Yeah, that's fine. We can do that. I'll, I'll make that change. Okay.
Thank you, Beth.
Yep.
Anyone else? So I'm gonna call for the motion. I've got a proposal to adjust the draft motion as. Stated in the. Staff report, we can wordsmith it by the person who actually makes the motion, but let me just try as a start, and then I'll ask for someone to make that motion. Motion to approve the request for release of covenant. For Evergreen Commons for lots twenty-two and twenty-five. Comma, acceptance of tripartite agreement as amended. And authorize the planning board chair to sign the related release. Related documents. Does that work? Can I have someone to make that motion?
I made that motion.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Beth. Okay. Call the roll for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Yes.
Heather?
That's where I'm accusing myself, I believe, right?
Right, so you're abstaining?
I am.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you. That was productive and. We're done on that one.
If this is Andy, if I may ask, Attorney Mead will get the revised version tomorrow, and is he assumption that perhaps the chair would be able to swing by tomorrow to do that, or?
Sure, just let me know when it's ready. I can't, I can come toward the end of the day, and since your day is longer.
Sure.
Well, I can certainly do it before eight o'clock tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send the revised document over this evening after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you don't, Attorney Mead, you don't need to have that. Signed before like four or five o'clock tomorrow, do you?
No, what I'll, what I'll try to do is actually get the bank to sign it in the morning, and then. So maybe we can do that, but that's fine. That works, definitely works.
Okay, because I know it's gonna be a late day before I get back into town.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, the other item I wanted to take at this point was the correspondence. From a resident in the Evergreen. I've forgotten what it's called today. We know it is the Evergreen Project. Concerning. ADA accessibility. My general understanding is that we are consulting with the city's ADA coordinator and our city solicitor, KP Law. It's not clear what the role or action the planning board would have to take at this time. So I'm gonna leave it with the planning director to address the status at this point.
Sure, thank you. So Mr. Brown is here this evening. I'm sure to speak to this, the, there's a thirty-page letter, a letter with some attachments. That outlines some concerns with accessibility throughout the project. There has been some discussion amongst city officials and the developer about ADA compliance. We do have the ADA, the city's ADA coordinator, who's reviewing this, as well as the city's legal counsel, just to circle back. And resolve any issues here again in accordance with the applicable regulations and standards, but at this time, we're waiting for further guidance from the ADA coordinator on the particulars. And the city's legal counsel. I don't know whether or not the developer or Mr. Brown are interested in addressing the matter further this evening. I do see that Mr. Brown has raised his hand.
Am I able to be heard? Hello?
Yes, yes, you are. Sorry, I was muted. Go ahead.
Thank you. Phil Brown, Tim Duffy Drive. I just want to, the board to understand that. I did meet with the executive director of the Massachusetts Access Board, William Joyce. And he is the one who oversees and implements that office with regard to ADA and AAB. Accessibility matters. And the reason that I met with him is because I didn't think that. People would take my opinion. Seriously, so I decided to meet with the executive director to review. The project with regard to accessibility. And the summary of that meeting is actually in the documents that you have. There's been a claim that this is a private property and that we do not need to comply to ADA and AAB. Regulations. Actually, that's not true. We have to have equal access for all. And, you know, the issues with the three paths that are noted in here are reviewed with Mr. Joyce. And also the issues with regard to the playground were reviewed with Mr. Joyce as well. And Mr. Joyce is available for meetings to review. Issues like this, if people are interested in getting the AAB. The AAB's opinion on accessibility matters.
Thank you very much. We do have all that documentation.
Madam Chair.
We wanna. Could we hear all of the members of the public first, maybe? Andy, is there someone else who wanted to speak?
Yeah, in addition to Attorney Mead and Mr. Brown, we have Chip Hall here. I believe he's raised his hand.
Okay, could, could we hear from him first, if you don't mind?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Yes, so I just, I appreciate Mr. Brown.
Could you give your name and your address?
Sure, this is Howard Hall or Chip Hall from Evergreen Commons LLC.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So I, I appreciate the board's position on looking at. These matters internally about the AAB compliance. One thing that I was guided through my experts was the fact that this is not public property. That it provides public access. Through an HOA, and because of that, it has special considerations. Okay? So at some point. It sounds like I'll have to have our expert also provide some feedback to the board as well as the accessibility. Personnel within, within the city. As well. So we look forward to that opportunity.
Thank you. Attorney Mead?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think I just want to reiterate what Chip has just said. The applicant has had a consultant, code consultant. On this project. I would note to the board that the visit by. The director was in February. I think Mr. Brown had an issue with his dates in his letter. It said February twenty-twenty. I suspect that was February twenty-twenty-one. And he refers to a letter to the Concom of June of two thousand eleven, which I suspect is two thousand twenty-one. But that there actually were a number of changes that have occurred. In the open spaces, this board, as well as the staff of the zoning planning office. Is aware over the last, over the summer. And some of which had to do with the layout, which was approved by this board in the spring of one of the walkways. So. The, the letter that's been provided isn't entirely current. I don't believe that we, it's entirely accurate any longer. And we certainly disagree with the legal conclusions that Mr. Brown has raised. And so. We're happy to be closing out this project and having the city come out and take a look. There's going to be a lot of site visits in the very near future by the Conservation Commission and planning staff, so. We're confident that the project has been built in accordance with the law. And we hope to have that shown shortly.
Thank you. So as I mentioned at the outset, it's not. Clear that this is going to come back before the planning board, as nothing was discussed on this issue or included in our decision. But I'm gonna leave it with Director Port. To take this into consideration with the relevant. Staff in the city and our city solicitor. To make sure that this gets. Clarified, resolved, or wherever it needs to go. Including if they determine it needs to come to the planning board. For further review, but at this point, I think we. Have done all we can to bring this at least out into the open, and we appreciate the. The concern of Mr. Brown. And those supporting his position.
Agreed, Chair. Thank you.
So we'll call this item closed. And move on to our next topic. Which is a discussion of the revised short-term rental unit amendment. That. Is dated. August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Resubmitted. By counselors. McCauley and Tom Tar. And for the board's reference, I believe. Bob and Rick may have been the only ones there unless others have watched. Behind the scenes. When this topic was brought up in the Planning and Development Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was just brought up in order to revive it. And then have it resubmitted. To city council. So there wasn't any substantive discussion. McCauley, Council McCauley simply went through. The intent and the, and the changes that they had included. And we, they did take public comments, and there were only two public comments. And it wasn't meant to be a large, you know. Public discussion. That's what's going to happen on. October twentieth. So. Rick and I decided that it might be a good idea for us to weigh in, since we made some recommendations last fall. Some of which were incorporated and some of which were not into this latest version. And also acknowledge that. Our solicitor, KP Law, Jonathan Eichman in particular, reviewed all of this for. Legal standing as a. As an amendment to the zoning ordinance. And his. What you see here reflects his recommendations. I believe there may be some specific parts of this that we want to talk about tonight. My thought going forward is that we take this. As the new version. And we work with the counselors rather than. Trying to promote recommendations that we may have made in the past that can be. In some ways. Adjusted. To meet this current version. And then to just. Understand the objective of tonight's discussion is to understand the intent and the various pieces of it. To clarify for ourselves what. What they're trying to accomplish and where we may have differences of opinion. So that when we go to the joint public hearing on the twentieth. This can, the result of this discussion can inform our response to what we hear that night. So I will. Open it. I think Rick maybe ought to get us started on this. He's given a lot, I know he's given a lot of thought to pieces of it. But that doesn't mean that we're not gonna all have our own thoughts on it. So I just wanted to get started with him.
Sure. Well, I. As Bonnie said, we talked about. Not taking a different approach than we took last year. And last year, we. Tried to fix the whole thing and make it fit within the zoning ordinance. Better and to clarify some things. And I think that, you know, it's come back to us in the same form, essentially the same form that came to us last year. And so it's clear that the sponsor doesn't want, doesn't want to go that route. So. So what we, what I think we probably should do is just limit our comments. One approach would be to limit our comments to those things which are. Which are probably clearly problematic. And I have, I have two issues that are remaining that. That I, that I find to be problematic. One is. We continue to have this issue of. Overlap between the definition of short-term rental unit. And the definitions of lodging house and bed and breakfast. And. There are. Different use relations for each of those three uses. And so just to summarize, the proposed use regulations for short-term rental units. Are more permissive than the existing regulations for B and Bs and lodging houses in the R two and R three districts. They're more permissive than the existing regulations for lodging houses in the B three district. They're more restrictive than the existing regulations for B and Bs and lodging houses. In the B two district, and they're more restrictive than the existing regulations for B and Bs. In the WBMD and WMU district. So what happens? Is that it's, it's really unclear what, what regulation applies. So if you're in the R three district, for example, right now, you could do a, a bed and breakfast by special permit. But short-term rental units would be allowed as a right. So. Is that something that we want? And, and which one, which one applies? Can somebody simply choose to be? A short-term rental unit and therefore skip going to the zoning board? Or do they have to? Does somebody have to make a determination whether they're a bed and breakfast or a short-term rental unit? So that's just kind of, kind of a cop complexities. Unless. You know, there are two different ways you could do it. You could. Say that. That this use. Cover is, is the one that, that applies whenever there's a conflict, or you could say that the less restrictive use. Applies whenever there's a conflict. And some language was added to this draft. That I think tried to get at that, but it wasn't clear enough. So I think that we just need to be clear about that. And one thing that I have. Thought of just this evening. Is that. The short-term rental unit definition defines it as a complete dwelling unit. And so it doesn't cover. What is the typical Airbnb, or what used to be the typical Airbnb. The original Airbnb was you rented out a bedroom. Or a part of your house or something like that. So it wasn't a complete dwelling unit. And I've, I've been in that kind of situation as. As an Airbnb renter, where I've just rented a bedroom and had, you know, it was like a bed and breakfast without the breakfast. So that's not covered here at all. I think that, you know, probably that needs to be looked at. So that's just one general approach, one general concern. And then the other concern that I have, which is a more technical concern. Is that. The proposed, the proposed amendment. Creates this new definition of residential unit. Which is a different use of the term residential unit. Than is currently used in at least three other sections of the zoning ordinance. And so I think that we, that needs to be cleaned up, and I have some ideas about how to do that. But I, again, I think it's a conflict between. It, it seems like this is an ordinance that in some cases was pulled from somewhere else and, and didn't look at, at how it fit into our zoning ordinance. And so I think that there are some very. Small, discreet changes that could be made, could be proposed. That would solve those, those two issues of mine, which are the major issues. Now, that doesn't get at all into. Do we, do we think this is, these are being proposed in the right zoning districts? I haven't even, I think that, that, that's a. An area that the, the. Counselor proposing it. Has, has ideas about, and. Probably that should be kind of, you know, expressed or, or discussed at some other time in the public hearing. But I was just kind of focusing on the, the very. Narrow technical details. That's all I have right now.
By the way, I forgot to mention something really important. This amendment. Is by right. That means that it's really important that we get. All these details. Done according to what we think is, is good best practice from a zoning perspective. This will be used by the zoning administrator. To. Respond to an applicant who comes in and says, I want to go to the licensing board. For a short-term rental license. I need to first understand, know that I meet all the criteria from a zoning point of view. So this will be her. Bible, as it were. But you note here in the use table. But you note here in the use table that they are either permitted or not permitted. So that's another reason to take this rather seriously and make sure that it includes everything that she's going to need to make a determination that a potential applicant is ready to go to the licensing board. So with that said, I'll take input from other people.
This is Don. I'm happy to go next, if that's okay, Bonnie. I have two comments and then also, Rick, I'll, I'll offer an observation on what you had just discussed, if I may. So my, where I go back on when we had the public hearing, it seemed to me that two of the primary concerns by residents was with respect to short-term rental units was noise and parking. So I believe the noise, first of all, the good news, I guess, is that that's something that's not necessarily covered by zoning. But looking into the licensing part, it talks about that enforcement's totally different issue. I'm not even going there. With respect to parking, and I'm looking at section G there, I'm actually a bit confused. I think part of it is just typographical. It says STRU shall a plan to provide. Something's missing there.
May I just offer an alternative operator shall provide off-street, on or off-site?
And then, then my, then my next question is, is, is to that parenthetical. I don't know, on or off-street, does that mean they can provide it on the street?
It's on-site or off-site. Off-site meaning somewhere other than on the street.
Okay, so there's a, so just, just for my edification, that is a universally accepted definition or some, something it means off-site? That that will mean not on the street?
Yeah, John, we would interpret that as being, they could put the parking on an adjacent parcel, not on the subject site. So.
Okay, but as long as it's not on a public right of weed, I would have thought it's a spot, but that, that's fine. That's, that's okay. Great. The second question I had is, is onto the licensing, the licensing section had a separate section. And so it was a little unclear to me, and I'm assuming this is not the case, that the licensing committee could not make some type of, make the license exempt from this requirement right here that's in the zoning. Is, is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, the zoning is going to dictate and the licensing provision would not provide any exemptions from that, this standard regulation. Certainly, if we find any conflicts, then the tougher one's gonna, you know, still be applicable.
Right, they just have to confirm that they're providing it off-street or, or, I mean, off-street or off-site. Okay, that's, that's what I thought. I just wanted to absolutely confirm that. Thank you. And then, Rick, my observation, I thought you did a, a very good job of explaining all the differences. My assumption, it's only assumption, is that the councilors and some of them understood exactly what you meant. And they just don't want to deal with it. So there, there can be conflicting. And yes, someone can go and they will take the lesser of the two standards or they'll, they'll, they'll have it STRU because that can allow more units for flexibility than, than what's existing there. That was my, that's my assumption interpretation when you were discussing that the last time. That's all I've got, Bonnie, right now.
Right, they just didn't address it, other than with a very vague sentence that would be useless if someone tried to interpret it.
Yeah, I, I think they just don't want to, they want to get this through. And I, I don't think they're going to get into a whole lot of details, but I, I may be wrong, but that's my, again, my assumption or inference.
And that's exactly why we're having this conversation tonight. So everybody understands the points that we want to make, or, you know, at least other members of the planning board want to make. And so we're not sort of arguing with each other there. We can argue with each other now about what's important and then come forward with what is top of the list for making sure this is the best amendment it can be under the circumstances. And again, we all know that the planning board only can recommend. So ultimately, to your point, Don, whatever they decide to do is what they will approve. We'll do our best effort on some of these things, such as the two, the two issues that Rick brought up to present our, our case. Yeah.
Chair Sun-Tai, this is Andy. I don't have the ability to raise my hand as a host. I would just suggest, I think, as is typical, we ask the sponsor, in this case, I think my customer colleague is one of the leads working with KP on this newer version that's come back, just generally suggested that overview that I think he's given pretty well during two council meetings in recent weeks, that he provides a similar overview for folks at the beginning. And I think to your point you were making a moment ago, certainly it might be beneficial for efficiency if there's any higher level sort of policy level debates to be had that we try to reach consensus on those first before drilling down into detailed language, we might, where we might get in the weeds without necessarily knowing what trajectory we're taking.
Okay, that's point, that's good point. Stay high until we are ready to go low. Does determining which which district it should be in fit in the category of policy?
I do think that's a high level. Yeah, I, I, and again, I, we, we could certainly have, you could certainly have debate about which things are high level. I certainly agree that which districts they're allowed in and whether allowed as a right is, is a higher level sort of policy level question. And I think also to some degree, there was a, at least it seems like there's some debate to be had about the length of time, maybe that's applicable.
Okay, so I'm not going to try to drive this around any, this discussion around any of those topics. I'll just leave it open for everybody and, and see what you want to talk about. Bob, are you raising your hand for me?
I'll just jump in. This, this has a little bit to do with, with the zoning district question. I mean, we had, we had the discussion a couple of weeks ago about this and, you know, it, it, while, while it's clear that there are a, a number of examples of well-run, well-managed, owner-managed, short-term rental units in the city right now. It's, it's also clear that there, there are units that, that kind of fall out of that, that zone of reasonableness for, for lots of reasons. And, and I would say that there are zoning districts like, like R two where residential properties are, are very close together, where it becomes particularly sensitive. So I, I think that the parking regulations are clear that you must provide parking for all uses in a property off-street. I think that, that is very clear. The, the language that, that concerns me and the language that I believe opens this up for possible abuse is, is the language that says you qualify as an owner occupant if you reside at that location for a hundred and eighty-three days out of the year. And I understand where that comes from. But when, when you link that to language that says, but you can rent an owner-adjacent unit as many days out of the year as you want, it means there's six months out of the year when a unit is potentially rented and there's no owner in the present on the property to kind of mind what's going on. And, you know, there are instances of units that, that are, are leased through third-party brokers. There are instances of units that, that, that feel more like commercial properties. And those are the ones that we really need to pay attention to relative to these regulations. Because there are lots of other examples of, of units that, that are managed very well. So I would say particularly in, in residential units, residential districts like R two, I would suggest that there be language that, that requires an owner to be present when an owner-adjacent unit, for example, is, is rented, so that, that they are taking care of what's going on. Particularly if it's rented by a broker and, and there really is no control over who is renting and, you know, what the situation might be on a, you know, case-by-case basis. So I think, you know, when, when we're talking about districts like R two, the language has to be much tighter. And, and we have to require owners to be present.
Let me qualify that from what I remember from earlier discussions. I think you've hit on an important point, the owner-adjacent rental unit. Well, I'm not looking at all the details and someone can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the owner is supposed to be there. I think the idea behind the owner not being allowing the owner to rent their residence, their entire residence when they're not there was the idea that people could make money while they went on vaca, to pay for their vacation while they were on vacation. That was a very sort of positive way to position it. But that's the whole, that's the, which, what is that one called? I always get the names mixed up, but the, the home share.
Yeah.
Okay, but you, what you're pointing at is really interesting, that if it isn't already in there, the language should beef up the owner-adjacent rental unit to require that the owner be in their primary residence while that owner-adjacent unit is being rented.
I, I think that helps tremendously in sensitive neighborhoods.
That's, that's helpful, yeah. Any other loopholes that anyone wants to plug or to change, suggest some changes?
So Bonnie, I think that, you know, in terms of looking at zoning districts, I think that when you compare the districts, I think that bed and breakfast, and you know, I know they didn't want to touch other areas. But I think a bed and breakfast should be at least as permissive as the short-term rental unit. You know, the, the limited, whatever it is, limited share rental unit is like a bed and breakfast. But there are other short-term rental units that are more impactful. So you have the units, you know, where somebody rents an entire house. And so it doesn't make sense to me to have districts where a short-term rental unit is allowed as of right. But a bed and breakfast is either prohibited or requires a special permit. So I think that, you know, as part of this, we should be, be a little bit more logical. And I also think that, you know, when you start thinking about that, it really makes sense to allow bed and breakfast in the R one district. I mean, a lot of people would love to live, love to have a, a vacation in the country, as it were. So I, I, I'm not really sure, I, I think that, I know that they're not trying to touch these other things and they're, and they're trying to finesse the, the conflicts. But I do feel like if we start looking at which zoning districts, all types of short-term rental units are allowed, then we should be thinking about the less impactful use like bed and breakfast and allowing them at least in the same, at the same level as, as a short-term rental unit.
Yes, and the amendment before us is dealing only with short-term rental units. So I think this is a separate request. I would raise it as an issue and suggest that it be dealt with once we determine what districts, where the short-term rentals will be allowed. And that it is, it's a separate process, but that we do that almost immediately afterward through another adjustment. And whether McCauley and Tontar, well, Tontar won't be there, but McCauley, you know, McCauley wants to sponsor that next year, that'd be fine. But I think raising the issue and just saying, we're not asking you to deal with it now, but it's something that we want to do later, might. We'd definitely keep it on the table. Would that work?
Yeah, I guess. It's, it's a, I'm uncomfortable, but, but I understand what you're going to do.
Yeah, I think the bigger issue is looking at this table. Since we haven't heard the rationale for it, why is it not being permitted in R one? Why is it not being permitted in, we had already recommended conservation area and WMU, I believe. I think that would be my questions on here to get their discussion. Because any rationale that can be given for not permitting it in R one, you could make up, not make up, you could give other equally reasonable rationales for R two and R three. So I think that's my big question. I don't know if anybody has given that any thought. Do you want to push back on that, not permitted in, in R one?
My question as well, why is the, you know, the, the west end that different from the north end as far as a house and having someone in there? You know, I don't, I don't see that much of a contrast.
There are huge difference, there are differences in configuration. I mean, there's much more space where those single-family homes are versus.
Coming and going using the house, I, yeah, I don't see that much of a difference. Sorry, Rick, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I was just going to say, parking and noise, the issues that Don raised are much, much more easily dealt with on a large lot than on a small lot and on a wide street than on a narrow street.
Any other?
Yep, Bonnie, this is Don. I, I agree with Alden and Rick. I'm not sure the question should be, one, I'd expanded some of the others, you know, some to what you said on, on, on conservation. If someone wants to be in a large farm area, whatever, it, it could be therapeutic for all I know to some people too. So I, I would agree. Why not some of the others? I mean, I think the R, the, the I's are obvious and, you know, the Bs, the Bs above the first four are obvious too. So some of the other ones, I think you guys are spot on.
Anything else? Oh, all right, now there are just little details I saw. So so that's it for us? That's what you expect you're going to be talking about when I, when I turn it over to the board members at the joint public hearing?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still concerned about the overlap on some and that whole notion of, you know, at the time of licensing or picking and choosing what type of a, a unit it is just seems, just seems to be confusing.
What do you mean?
If they're, if they want to declare themselves a bed and breakfast as opposed to a short-term rental unit and that kind of thing. I just think that's going to, still going to muddy the waters. But if we're dealing only with this, this particular piece instead of the other, other pieces, I guess, you know, we're we, we can't really address that.
Yeah, I think that, that's going to really complicate things if we want to keep focused on this. It doesn't mean we're dropping it. That's why I brought it up. And it's definitely to be dealt with afterward. I don't know, Jennifer is actually here? Are you, Jennifer?
I am here.
So is, does this make sense that we could leave the overlap or how bed and breakfast and lodging houses are dealt with in various districts until after the districts are decided for the short-term rentals? Can we do that in step by step?
Obviously you can, and, but we would, where it is a concern, I think we should maybe look more in-depth at what the challenges might be ahead of it, but I don't think it's, it's probably not worth muddying this conversation with that change simultaneously.
Can I just raise an issue that does go to that? I think it goes to that section F, four F says that no operator may offer more than one short-term rental unit at a time. If somebody had a bed and breakfast and they're, they fit into both categories, then they wouldn't be, they would only be able to rent one room at a time?
Yeah, I, I think that there, there are enough distinctions in the definitions as they've been developed that would really make most of the bed and breakfasts that exist not qualify as short-term rentals. I mean, just the, the room count, the number of occupants as the, as the definitions have been developed, I think do keep them distinct, but I, I do think it's worth looking at a little more closely. And, and to Bonnie's point, it can probably be, you know, if we do find a conflict, it can be addressed on the heels of anything that's decided here.
Okay, I also did have a question about that F, if, if there's a management company, I guess they would only be able to do one short-term rental unit at a time, which I don't know if we're trying to preclude management companies and dealing with, you know, because I think the operator and an operator can only lease one, can only offer one short-term rental unit at a time. So that would prevent people from, like, management companies or somebody from managing more than one short-term rental unit. I don't know if that's something people would, people want or people don't want, but that, I think, happens because of that section.
I, I have to assume from discussion, I've heard that that was intentional.
Okay.
So let's clarify that. I thought in that sense, the operator was the owner. So that nobody with a, with a property where a short-term rental unit, there are multiple short-term rental units may offer more than one at a time. But if they, if I and you both have units that we want to rent and we're both using the same management company, you and I are still the owner.
Operators, yes.
But the management company could manage both of them for us. But you and I are still on the hook if there's any problem with our individual one unit at a time. Does that make sense?
That was my understanding, Bonnie, and I would want to look, to clarify this, we could look at the definition of operator if that's available, but.
Yeah, it's, it's up above there, the definition, and it does say natural person who is the owner of record of the residential unit.
And therefore, to Beth's question, the, a management company, because the city was not, or the, last time I spoke with the counselors, they were not looking to prohibit management companies. This was intended to mean that any particular owner, you know, somebody, an individual can't come in and buy up 10 properties and rent them all out as Airbnbs.
Yeah, I think the idea was to not have, I, I think it's least concept is a concern about having a giant company own a bunch of these units around the city, operating it, you know, almost like a hotel or a tourist facility, rather than having it be actually locals that are running these short-term rental units, right?
I think the spirit of this is that, that the owners are renting out a portion of their house and, and that the owners are looking at who's renting. And the, the problem with management companies that, that could arise is they, they obviously are, are renting, just pushing, pushing the process along and there's, there seems to be at least less oversight there. So when a third party enters that, that equation of owner responsibility for this whole situation, it becomes a little less certain. And then neighbors are impacted potentially, then, then that's where the issues are. And I think in the city right now, those, those are the instances when there, there's potentially more issues right now than when owners are very actively involved.
I'm wondering if we might want to add a word to that definition. Instead of calling it an operator, call it an owner operator? Because it starts out a natural person who is an owner of record of the residential unit. But then it says, or is legally authorized to act in relationship to the short-term rental as the owner of record. So if that's clear enough, we just need to know that operator means that that property must be owned by someone who lives here for at least 183 days of the year and is the license holder. And if they choose to use someone else to manage the property, that person manages it as if they own the property. But there will never be any, as we've called them, investment properties where someone buys up one family unit or multiple units and rents them all out without having any residential relationship to the property. That's what we're trying to accomplish. If, in your reading of this between now and the 20th, that's not clear, we need to focus in on those areas to clarify.
Bonnie, you're saying if, if there's an owner, but, but then there's a management company involved, that management company could act in the capacity of an owner in a rental situation? And I guess the only question I have about that is back, back to my point about the owner being present when their owner adjacent unit is being rented. It's hard to imagine a management company doing that.
Well, then they'll have to, yeah, I mean, I don't know if we will get that language included in here, but I do support that idea. That's, you know, maybe these companies are going to have to be more flexible or look at what they do in a different way based on what our, our regulation states. But we should go after what we want to protect the neighborhoods and also to allow the owners to rent units for short-term. Yes.
I think Bob, if I may, brings up a, a good point, but I think what some of the sponsors will say is, even though we're looking at the zoning, unfortunately, it's, it's this ancillary ordinance, the licensing. And, and again, I, I couldn't agree that enforcement is a tough issue and we've got Jennifer here, which is great from a zoning point of view. But it, in theory, if they do Bob what you're saying and they're going to go in and they can have the ability for their license to be revoked. Now, all that sounds theoretically good, but again, it depends upon the enforcement of, on the licensing section of the ordinance.
So. Agreed, yeah. It just.
And I think that's what they're going to come back with us to.
Maybe it just, it just leaves it more open for abuse by people who are, you know, treating it as more of a commercial way.
Right.
So, but you're right, the enforcement is the licensing procedure and, and yes, it could all be reviewed then.
So I would encourage you to, to look at the licensing proposed amendment as well, because there are some inconsistencies. Not that we're responsible for reviewing that or would even be included in the public discussion of it. But if you say anything that really sticks out, it'd be worth it to just raise it. Because some of the definite, because they've done a very good job of including the same definitions in both documents. So if something gets changed here because of our recommendation, they'll change it in the licensing. But there might be things that jump out at you that would inform our discussion on the zoning when we talk with them next time. Anything else? Okay. We will be talking about this with a lot of public input that we've heard before, but I expect that they'll all be back again. Could be quite a long session on the 20th as you probably already have anticipated. So thank you in advance. Well, thank you for tonight, of course, and your input, but also for what we're about to go through. And any advice you have, you know, between now and then, as to how to make that conversation move in an efficient way? I'm open to your suggestions. As Councilor Shand is, is very collaborative in how she runs these sessions.
What, what does the process look like going forward after the 20th?
If we resolve all the issues or if they want to hang on to it a little bit longer, but we believe that we're finished, we can make a recommendation that night. And our choices are to recommend as, you know, if we amend stuff that night as amended, recommend with some very clear amendments that we think are very important, even though they may not have yet accepted them, or recommend not to have it approved. Or the whole thing could be continued because there's still too many issues outstanding. And then we have another planning board meeting taken up with this later on. But eventually they will take it, so when we make our recommendation, we bow out and they take it either back into the subcommittee or they vote that night to take it out of the committee and put it back into the council. And then they vote on it. The complicating factor is the licensing agreement. And there is general agreement that one will not go forward without the other. So that is a procedural issue that I don't know how the council is going to handle. Is they still, I don't know if they've finalized what they want to do with the licensing agreement. I would doubt it because the discussion over the zoning could impact some of the decisions they've already made for the licensing. So it's a rather complicated way to take two amendments forward, one a zoning amendment and one a city ordinance amendment. Andy, do you have any insight on how that might happen?
Well, I would certainly expect, like you said, just like the, the, the two committees of the city council, license and permits and planning and development, they're handling these two ordinances, that they'll run those in parallel up to the point at which if there's consensus that can be reached on the terms, they'll vote to act on them on the same night, you know, with the, obviously, as the chair mentioned, these kind of go hand in hand. The whole premise here was to, again, not necessarily taking a stance on it. The premise here is to allow the use in certain areas of the city under the zoning and that's a more, a shorter portion of the ordinance. Whereas the licensing piece is more involved and that's the one where really if there's an issue, the type of issues that we've heard about, you know, where this regulation was brought up is things like noise, parking, et cetera. Those would be pulling a license or having them go before the license commission to address the issue. So I do think these things have to go hand in hand. I do think the definitions, the terms, you know, need to be working hand to hand and the council will have to have those, you know, working together before they can adopt both.
All right, we'll see how they decide they want to take it forward. Okay, so we'll close out this conversation. Is that okay with everybody? And approval of the minutes, as you know, we haven't received them. We will have them by the 20th, along with the minutes from tonight's meeting. So we'll deal with both of them that night. A proud introduction from and to Heather. So let's just take a few minutes to go around and introduce ourselves, starting with Heather herself.
Hi there, I am Heather Rogers. I, I live on Strong Street. I have three teenage boys and I work at Bentley's Real Estate. I've been a Realtor for seven years and a lot of the work that I do now is in new construction, both in Newburyport Residential and in Rowley. But I also do resale, so I'm looking forward to learning more. I'll be quiet the first few meetings because this is a lot to absorb, but I really like all the insight that I'm hearing. Thank you.
Okay, so why don't we just say just a few words about who we are? We'll go down the list, the usual alphabetical list, so Alden has to go first.
Okay, well, welcome Heather. I have been on the planning board just a little bit over a year and a quarter now. So one of the newer members, all in all, I feel like I'm still learning as well. So welcome to jumping in to all that. I live in the South End, I'm on Lunt Street. And I've lived in Newburyport for, for a little over four years now. So getting familiar with the area and all of this process as well. So, welcome.
Beth?
Yep, hi, I'm Beth. I live on Woodland Street. I came onto the board a little bit before Alden. So I think I've been on maybe almost two years. I don't know, I've lost track of time. But I am an environmental attorney. I have three kids, 13, 11, and eight. We just had birthdays, so it takes me a minute. And yeah, I've been in Newburyport since 2017 and was in Amesbury before that, but I grew up in town too. So I live around the corner from where I grew up. So yeah, it's been, it's fun to be on the board, so it's been a learning experience.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Nice to know I'm not the newest member of the board any longer. I've, I've been on the board for, Bonnie, I think it's two months now. My wife and I moved to Newburyport just about two years ago. Our kids are out of school doing their own thing and we, we moved from Winchester to Newburyport in November two years ago. I'm an architect, I work for a company at Boston called Gensler, which is an international architectural practice with an office in Boston. Have been working at home for the last year and a half, but learning, learning more about Newburyport every day and fascinated by these meetings and look forward to working with everyone. So welcome, welcome to the group.
Great, Rick and I have already chatted with Heather, so we'll move on to Don.
Hi Heather, I was wondering, maybe you can give me a ride in a hot air balloon sometime? Oh, that's right, that's the other company, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm retired, I've worked extensively in the energy industry and still do some consulting from time to time. I've lived in Newburyport for about 16 years and geez, I've been on the planning board, I don't know, 14 years, 15 years? I can't even remember anymore, but I think several years less than Bonnie, maybe more than several years less than Bonnie. So it's, it's always interesting, welcome aboard and look forward to meeting you in person one of these days.
Linda, you want to say hello? You're, you're muted. Do you know you're muted?
I unmute my audio. I'm the note taker that didn't have the notes ready for this meeting. I, I'm up in Maine for now, until things get back to in person. I look forward to seeing everybody. I miss everyone so much.
Great, thanks. So the good news is, welcome, welcome to Heather. I have some bad news for everybody. Leah resigned today, effective immediately. You know, we haven't seen her in a while. It's for a very good reason. She has so much work, she can't, can't spend any more time with us. She's really sad to leave us because she did love being on the board and you know, those of you who have been on the board, how much she contributed. And she can't do that anymore and it's really frustrating for her. And so she has decided the time has come for her to resign. So that means we have two openings. MJ's still hanging in there. She's got some other things to do tonight, so she couldn't join us. I don't know how much longer, quite honestly. She's been very generous to stay on as long as she had. Her term was up in August. So I'm not going to make the appeal again. You know what I would like to say? Basically, if we don't find a candidate, maybe nobody else will, I don't know. But certainly they won't find as appropriate candidates as we can source. So carry on with your thinking. Okay, I didn't have anything else. Andy, do you have any, any other updates for us?
No, as you can see, we're, we're busy at this point with multiple zoning amendments and policy decisions relative to land use that need to be resolved. Happy to provide updates on anything that we're working on though.
Well, if you don't think there's anything we need to know right now or should know or whatever, we'll leave it at your discretion.
Yeah, I have no, no reason to. I liked in the meeting, but I'm happy to elaborate.
Yeah, I have no, no reason to like the meeting, but I'm happy to elaborate anything you're, might be interested in.
Does anybody have any questions about anything that is dangling that you'd like him to update us on? Okay.
I would note, by the way, that we are expecting uh, in uh, in the next month to be looking at the first uh, or the new 40 hour project on Route One. So just as your, you know, future meetings, consider the, the end of this year to be probably focused on that particular project, but other than that, I can't think of anything else to note at the moment.
Okay, more specifically, that's the Haley's um, triangle there going up along Route One. We're due for a pre-application meeting with them, aren't we, to ease into this?
Um, they've actually had that with the uh, staff thus far and they are now able to file their application with you.
They don't have a pre-application with the planning board?
Uh, there's, there's not a requirement that they have a pre-application with the board. My recollection is the, the pre-application requirement is that they do with the uh, with the planning director and staff.
Oh, not as a requirement. I just thought they desired one. I, I may have misremembered and I haven't looked at my notes since that meeting. So if they're, your understanding is that they're going to go forward with a formal application and do you have any idea when we might be seeing that?
I believe at the second meeting in November is what we're talking about right now. Um, but again, it's in the process of being filed.
Okay.
We'll be, we'll, we can be specific as soon as we get that filing confirmed.
Good, okay, great. Well, that's, that's better. Um, most of us are not real happy with pre-application uh, conferences, um, because they tend to be um, quite repetitive with what we hear at the first application anyway, of application hearing. So I think go forward with what they've gotten from staff and, and um, Rick and me, that's great. Yeah.
Yeah, without going into too much detail, just one thing that may be worth noting, and as you look, look at the scale of pros and cons of various factors in that project, there's been recent discussions of Waterfront West, New England Development and the Avalon, um, you know, relationship for possible housing development. Keep in mind, as there's, there's questions there about whether that would be a so-called 40B project, uh, that attempts to override local zoning. Um, and um, what is what we call safe harbor, which is where a community has um, produced enough affordable housing uh, so as to be able to say to a developer, no, uh, that particular 40B is not, you know, suitable for the, the city. Interestingly, the way that this, the timing of the, the way that the numbers work for our subsidized housing inventory and the timing of the project on uh, Route One comes in is that that particular project, um, once it is approved, assuming it's approved and then what we have seen, um, sort of schematics from the development team, with the number of units proposed there, if that product is approved, we would have a two-year uh, so-called safe harbor under 40B. Um, so just, it's worth noting that mainly because yeah, there's obviously sensitivity to a location like that for what it's going to look like. It's sort of the, the northern gateway to the 40R district as you come down Route One. Um, but at the same time, you know, there's, there's, I think there's some, some desire at least to have that product approved, uh, not in the, the least because it's a mixed use, you know, a project with affordable units in the 40R district, but also because it could uh, provide the safe harbor um, numbers that we had been looking for.
Okay, good. Then I'm gonna call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you, Beth.
I'll second Alden.
Thank you. Final roll call of the evening. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you very much and we are done.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.